Good morning, everybody, and welcome to the Cobb County Board of Commissioners Regular Meeting of November 10th, 2020. And today, we're blessed to have Pastor Darrell Price, the Executive Director for Noonday Baptist Association, to lead us on our invocation, followed by Deputy Cody Driscoll leading us in the presence of the leaders. So those who are fully enabled, please stand.
Thank you for your good work here. And before I pray, I just want to remind us of Jesus's words that said, when he was separating sheep and goat, he said to some, when they would ask, did I do these good works? When did I do these? And I tell you from a nonprofit that received funding from you all earlier this year, many people received good works because you gave generously to nonprofits. So, thank you very much. Let me pray with us. Father, we thank you for your goodness. We thank you that you give us opportunity to serve you in so many different ways, in simple places and sophisticated places. But most of all, Father, we pray, asking you to bless us today as this body comes together to make decisions, to do the business of our county. We pray, Father, asking your wisdom on them. Give them the courage to follow their convictions and the desire to follow the vision that you continue to give. We pray, asking this in Jesus's name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the visible liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor, Deputy. All right, we have a number of presentations this morning, and I think we'd like to have the board join us in the first one to present anniversary of work to Cobb County government employees with more than 35 and 40 years of service. So we can have the board come down front, please.
Good morning, Chairman Boyce, Commissioners, Dr. McMorris, and special guests. Today, we are here to recognize employees who have provided Cobb County with 35 and 40 years of dedicated service. Each of these employees has seen great wins of change during their careers with us, especially this year. We are thankful for their contributions and continued support of the county. When I call your name, please come forward with your agency director and/or department head. We'll begin with 35 years. Tim Cox, Police Department. Next up, we have Keith Kellett from the Water System. And unable to join us today is Edward Hughes with Information Services. Next, we have our 40-year anniversaries. Robert Helverson with Magistrate Court. Joseph Barger with the Sheriff's Office. And unable to join us today are Levarn Holmes with the Police Department and Robert Wyant with Information Services. We'd also like to acknowledge the families who have supported our honorees throughout their endeavors with us. We know the support of family enables us to accomplish great things. Thank you so much, and congratulations on your milestones.
If I could get Dana Johnson and members of the chamber and other representatives to come up front to present a proclamation of Cobb County Coalition of Small Businesses designating November 28th as Small Business Saturday. Proclamation. Whereas Cobb County celebrates local small businesses and the contributions they make to our community by creating jobs and boosting the economy. Per the U.S. Small Business Administration, there are currently 30.7 million small businesses in the United States, and they represent 99.7% of all businesses with paid employees. And whereas, from 2000 to 2018, small businesses are responsible for nearly 64.9% of net new jobs created. Small businesses also employ 47.3% of U.S. employees in the private sector. And whereas, 62% of U.S. small businesses reported the need for consumer spending to return to pre-COVID levels by the end of 2020 in order to remain in business. And 65% of all U.S. small business owners believe that the return of regular customers from pre-COVID would be the greatest aid in achieving this. And whereas, 75% of U.S. consumers seek ways in which they can support small businesses and their local economies. And whereas, Small Business Saturday is held the Saturday after Thanksgiving, one of the busiest shopping times of the year. This day is supported by advocacy groups as well as public and private organizations across the country. 95% of consumers who shopped on Small Business Saturday said that it encourages them to shop or eat at small, independently-owned businesses all year long, not just during the holiday season. And whereas, 96% of consumers who shopped on Small Business Saturday agree that shopping at small, independently-owned businesses supports their commitment to making purchases that have a positive social, economic, and environmental impact. And 97% of consumers who shopped on Small Business Saturday agree that small businesses are essential to their community. And whereas, in 2019, U.S. consumers reported spending a record high of an estimated $19.6 billion at independent retailers and restaurants on Small Business Saturdays. Now, therefore, we, the Cobb County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim, November 28th, 2020, as Small Business Saturday in Cobb County, and urge all residents to support small businesses and merchants on this day and throughout the year. Signed this 10th day of November, 2020, by all members of the board. Congratulations.
A big thank you, Chairman, and our Board of Commissioners, because your small business support is so clear and so evident. And one of great example of that is the 50 million small business grants. And we've heard over and over again from the 3,715 companies, the small businesses that receive the grants, what a difference it's going to make. And this county showed its commitment, I think, set an example for the entire state for its collective commitment for small businesses. And they're the backbone of our community, and we're so proud of our partnership with all the business associations, with the county, with every entity in Cobb. And we just encourage everybody, keep it local, support our small businesses, not just on Small Business Saturday, but every day is Small Business Day. Thank you, Chairman, for your commitment.
Now, if I could get members of the Cobb Board of Health to come up here, please. Good morning to all of you. Another proclamation, this is a very important one, given the times. Whereas, in 1920, Cobb and Douglas Public Health was founded with one doctor and one nurse to primarily address infectious diseases and environmental hazards. Growing steadily over the past century, Cobb and Douglas Public Health now has four public health facilities in Cobb with more than 25 programs and 300 employees to serve more than 780,000 residents. And whereas, Cobb and Douglas Public Health is recognized as a leader among health districts and works with community partners to promote, protect the health and safety of our residents. In 2015, it was the first health district in the state, among only 2% in the nation, to achieve national accreditation from the Public Health Accreditation Board. And whereas, 100 years since its inception, Cobb and Douglas Public Health continues to be a vital strategic organization with a goal of preventing illness and injury, advocating for health equity, promoting optimal health, preparing for disaster response, and reducing the spread of infectious diseases such as the coronavirus pandemic now. Now, therefore, we, the Cobb County Board of Commissioners, do hereby honor all Cobb and Douglas Public Health employees on their 100th anniversary, and thank you for your hard-working employees, for their commitment to fostering healthier lives in a healthier Cobb County. Signed this 10th day of November, 2020, by all members of the Board of Commissioners. Congratulations, and thank you all that you've done. And Dr. Meemar, could I make some comments?
Thank you, everybody, and thank you to Chairman Boyce and the Board of Commissioners. You've always been supportive through our history. And as we go, as we've been doing the pandemic, it's been more valuable than ever. And I promise that we did not plan to have a pandemic at our 100th anniversary, and it kind of squashed any of the celebratory plans that we had had. But we're grateful to our community and our employees as well who have really stepped up. Everybody has been all hands on deck for what, our eighth month now. And so, we want to thank everybody. And I feel like I just need to do a little bit of a kind of plug. We know that we have a surge that's going on around the nation, and we are experiencing some increased levels here as well. And we've just done so well up to this point, and there's a light at the end of the tunnel. We have the vaccine that is coming out. And I know everybody is very tired of this, but please, let's just make that last push just for a few more months, and things will get a lot better. So, thank you, everybody, and thanks for having us and supporting us.
Thank you, Dr. Meemar. Okay, the next proclamation is from Commissioner Gamble, who sent a certificate of recognition to the Still Family and a donation from Still Family Farms.
Great. And I have Leslie and Stephanie joining me. Well, this was our second annual Gamble's Great Pumpkin Day, and it was a wonderful, beautiful day. And I know we had a lot of fun, and a lot of people were there. And I'm so grateful for you extending the graciousness of us using your property and allowing the county and the community to enjoy your home. So, it's with great honor that I give you this certificate of appreciation. The Cobb County Board of Commissioners thanks you and your family for your philanthropic efforts to raise funds and supplies for Safe Path Children's Advocacy Center, which helps children who are victims of abuse, neglect, and trafficking. The Still Family Farm shares their nine-generation family heritage on this beautiful piece of earth, along with the good food, great stories, and deep roots that can be found on the farm every day, including Commissioner Kelly Gamble's annual Great Pumpkin Day to benefit Safe Path. Thank you for your impact and graciously sharing your heritage with our community. Presented this 10th day of November, 2020. And there's this one. And then also, we had our fire department there and our public safety officers. And I know we went through all kinds of fire hats, and no pink fire hats were left. So, our fire department, public safety, has brought you your own pink hats. To commemorate the day. Would you like to say something?
I would. Commissioner Gamble connected us to Safe Path last year and challenged us to partner with them. And I appreciate your vision there. Because what Safe Path does is they take our most vulnerable and tender citizens, our children, who are experiencing a season of plowing, where really, they've just been pulled up by the roots. And Safe Path gets right in the dirt with them. And through the tools and implements of the public safety department, the legal system, supportive therapies, whatever they need to do to leverage what we have here in Cobb County to help these children, they do it. They are not afraid of the dirt. And they put these kids back into a safe environment where they can begin to put down their roots again and flourish. And as citizens of Cobb County, we are looking with our eyes just beyond the horizon to hopefully harvest a new generation that is resilient and has discernment. And let me tell you, we're doing a good job. These kiddos that we're raising, we're parents of teenagers, they're coming for us, and we better have some answers, and we better have some solutions, because they have come up through a time that would cause them to have those qualities. So, Safe Path is doing the very first work in rescuing our traumatized children and putting them onto a path where they can begin to set the buds of discernment and of productivity. And so, we want to give them whatever they need to get that work done. And if our little bit of fertilizer looks like some face mask and some lightsault wipes and some paper towels and some cash, that is what we can do. So, we turned our people that come to the farm onto Safe Path, and we asked them to bring their supplies and bring their money. And they did. We had the greatest turnout we'd ever had during our fall season, and our people brought all kinds of supplies. We're delivering straight to Safe Path after the meeting. And we donated a dollar for every ticket sold. And so, we have a check for Safe Path we'd like to present to you for $1,765. So, thank you so much.
Did you want to say anything?
So, my name is Gail Garland, and I'm the Director of Intervention Services at Safe Path. And I would just simply say that we can't do the work we do at our center without organizations like y'all's who come alongside of us and share our passion for protecting, like you said, the most vulnerable citizens in Cobb County. And we do that each and every day. We are kind of called to that work, is how we feel. But we could not do the work without the support of groups like yours. It encourages us in the field and keeps us working. And your illustration was beautiful that you just used. I love that. So, we just are so grateful for this donation and for the supplies, for sure. So, we appreciate you guys.
Okay, and I'm going to have Commissioner Burrow the next proclamation from Georgia National Guard. And we're really honored to have Major General Warden today from the Georgia National Guard with us and his representatives. General, welcome today, sir.
Good morning, everyone. I can't tell you how honored I am to have General Carden here and also to recognize our Georgia National Guard. And we also have the Red, White, and You team that are going to tell you about a special event for the Family Support Center Foundation that's coming up in December. So, General Carden, thank you for being here. We appreciate all you do for us. Okay, whereas, the Georgia National Guard formed in 1751, starting a 269-year history of defending the people of this state and nation. The organization's history parallels America, having marked service in peace and wartime through such conflicts as the War of 1812, World War I, World War II, Vietnam, and the Global War on Terrorism. And whereas, under the leadership of Major General Thomas M. Carden, Georgia National Guard troops have served residents during natural disasters that devastated our communities and then helped rebuild them afterwards, providing crucial support in times of dire need. And whereas, most recently, our National Guard has deployed three Army Guard units and two Air Guard units to Iraq and Afghanistan. It has provided infection control to 2,434 long-term care facilities, conducted COVID testing and sampling for 56,369 Georgia residents, worked with 10 food banks across the state to prepare 99.7 million pounds of food, and moved 40.1 million prepared meals, delivered 948,000 school lunches, built a 200-bed alternate care facility at the World Congress Center in six days for treatment of non-acute COVID patients, and supported 22 hospitals across the state. And whereas, the Georgia National Guard has headquartered in Marietta since September of 2009, provided civil disturbance response through 1,745 guardsmen, who gave security presence, law enforcement support, and site security to 10 locations across the state. And therefore, the Cobb County Board of Commissioners do hereby recognize and salute the ongoing heroic efforts on behalf, on our behalf, by the men and women of the Georgia National Guard. This the 10th day of November, 2020. We can never thank the National Guard and all of our military for what they do to defend us and protect our freedoms. And General Carden knows that I have a special place in my heart for the National Guard, as my dad was retired Lieutenant Colonel in the North Carolina National Guard for 26 years. So, they're very special. And the day before Veterans Day, I think, is very appropriate that we're honoring our National Guard today. And it's also the Marines' birthday. Colonel Boyce, it's the Marines, too. So...
Would you like to say a few words?
Well, Chairman Boyce, Commissioner Burrell, Board of Commissioners, I can't thank you enough, and I'll certainly pass your kind words on to the 15,000 men and women that serve in your National Guard. I've got the honor to serve as their senior servant. Today, we're engaged in six out of six geographic combatting commands around the world. We've got about 300 soldiers and airmen continuing to support our COVID response. We still have about 25 service members involved in civil disturbance mitigation and being in a position to augment our public safety professionals, many of which we honored here this morning. And I can't thank the entire community that is Cobb County. There's no accident that the bulk of our force structure and the Georgia National Guard is headquartered here in Cobb County. And as I watched leaders, intentionally engaged leaders in our community from public health to public safety to philanthropic organizations being honored here today, it just makes me so proud of Cobb County and so blessed that our headquarters is here in Cobb County. And I'd like to thank the Cobb Chamber specifically for their leadership and all that they do, Mr. Loud, Ms. Mason, and Nancy Couch and Leslie Hammond that serve on our National Guard Family Foundation. We can't do what we do without our families being taken care of. And they are so intentional and give so unselfishly of their time and talent, as many of you do, to enable the service of all those who wear the nation's uniform. And I'm just, you know, I have a thankful heart as I humbly stand here before you today and tell you how proud I am to be able to put on your nation's uniform, to serve this state and to serve this nation. And as we go into Veterans Day, I'll tell you, I hope you'll reach out to all of our veterans and thank them for their service. And specifically to our Vietnam veterans who didn't get the welcome home and the thank yous that we get today, along with everyone else. And again, Chairman Boyce, I'd certainly like, Commissioner Burrell beat me to it, but happy birthday to the United States Marine Corps, our teammates. Well, thank you all very much, and I thank Chairman Loud.
Thank you. Thank you, General Carden. What an honor. Here we are on the eve of Veterans Day. And to thank Chairman Boyce for his service, Commissioner Ott for his service, and the others that are in the room, and certainly General Carden. In what better way is Nancy Couch and Leslie came to share an eye. And we've got a great committee that's put together a fundraiser that we want to be able to show the 15,000 soldiers and airmen that General Carden just talked about. These are the men and women that are serving not only our state of Georgia, but our nation and across seas, as Commissioner Burrow mentioned, the deployments that have gone on. While we get to go and do our everyday living, live, work, and play in this amazing community we call Cobb County, what I want to do is give you an opportunity to shop. Black Friday is coming up. That's the day just before Small Business Saturday. Remember, we talked about that just a bit ago. But we're going to have an auction that's going to begin. And this is all going to be about experiences throughout 2021. Look, 2020 has been about shelter in place and COVID and pandemic and quarantine and everything. So, we've been collecting a group of experiences that are going to happen. This is our Georgia National Guard. This is not the Cobb County National Guard. We're fortunate for them to be based here and be able to interact with them so closely. But I want to encourage you, on Black Friday, we have cards and websites that we hope that the public will that the public will go out and start to bid on these very unique experiences. I'm going to give you a few examples. Do you want to be on air with Clark Howard? Would you like to drive a tank? Would you like to be in an airplane ride or a hot air balloon ride? Would you like, uh, let's see, to go to Italy? I mean, there are so many fascinating experiences. Steve Penley, we've heard of Steve Penley. There's at least one, maybe two pieces of art that are going to come. He's going to specifically commission for the Georgia National Guard Family Foundation. 100% of this money is going to go to those family members. Remember, it's not just the men and women that are serving, it's the families that have hit different tragedies along the way. This is where that money's going to go to show the support and appreciation we all have as Georgians for the whole list of what Commissioner Burrow and, and General Carden shared of what they've been doing for each and every one of us. I hope that you'll join us on Black Friday. And then the live event is where we're going to culminate the entire event, which is going to be on Wednesday, December the 9th. And please stay tuned. You'll be seeing lots of information for the links and the connections. And thank each one of you guys for the service and helping us put this together. And we'd love to get others involved if you're available. And thanks again to the Georgia National Guard.
Thank you, sir. Stop.
Three, two, one. Thank you all very much. And, uh, General Carden, I know you probably have to leave today, but I just want to make one comment, sir. Uh, as you know, I was with the Baghdad PRT in 2007 when the 48th was out of Tajji. And I think it's extraordinary that the only way you could tell the difference between a regular army, reserve army, and guard army was their unit patch. What has happened in the National Guard because of your leadership and others like you has been extraordinary. It might be the success story of the 21st century of how the army is, you know, fight as one team. So congratulations. Please thank all your teammates. Extraordinary people. Thank you, sir. Okay, uh, public comment, Mr. Rowling?
Uh, yes, Chairman and the board. We have four, excuse me, five public secrets to sign up today. The first is Greg Elder.
Okay. And, uh, as we know, everyone's entitled to five minutes of comment. Please let us know who you are and where you live. We'd appreciate that for the record. Thank you very much, Mr. Elder. Welcome.
Good morning and thank you for having us this morning. On behalf of our board chair, Judge Ann Harris, and our CEO, Dr. Ike Reichert, I thank you for having us this morning. First of all, I'd just like to say thank you. As has been mentioned already on the eve of Veterans Day, I thank you for your service, for your family sacrifices, each of you have served as well. As commissioners, your job has been extraordinarily difficult during this time. Not only have you had to navigate so many firsts and unknown waters, U.S. citizens have shown your heart through the support that you've given to organizations like ours and others representing in this room. And you've empowered us to be able to go out and be the hands and feet of Jesus to make difference in our community. And so I want to thank you for that. I want to share with you some of the things that you've accomplished since April through your last round of funding for food. You gave us $60,000. And during that time, we were able to form new relationships with suppliers, wholesalers, manufacturers, relationships we never had before. We were able to use some of that funding to be able to buy and extend the, the power of that money to go even farther. We formed new partnerships with the faith community, with the National Guard who served with us at our shelter, who others in this room that we've partnered with to help provide service to the community. We've expanded into new areas. We've identified over 50 different areas that we've been able to serve in Cobb County during this time. We've expanded relationships with great organizations like Tip Top Poultry and Atlanta Community Food Bank. I'd like to also share with you some of what happened just between March and July, and this is a year-over-year comparison. Households in 2019 from March through July that we served were 6,100. That same time period, March to July of 2020, was 61,000. It was a tenfold response. In 2019, during that same period, we served 16,000 people. During that same time in 2020, we served 95,000 people. That number's upwards of 140,000 now. In terms of meals, during that same time, we provided 260,000 meals. Same time period in 2020, 920,000 meals. That number's up over 1.2 million at this point. And in terms of pounds of food, 175,000 pounds of food were distributed during that same time period in 2019. And in 2020, that number's 1.1 million and it's now over 1.5 million dollars. That's what you and your vision and your commitment to this community have allowed us to do during this time. And so I want to share with you who you have allowed us to serve. You've allowed us to serve men, women, and children who come to us through one of our two food pantries in Cobb County, one in Marietta and one in Smyrna. You've allowed us to serve seniors who are in low-income housing, who even if they could get out, may not have the resources to get the food that they need. Through our 34 school pantries, we never closed the school pantries during this entire time. The model changed, the delivery model changed, but the mission never changed and the pantries never closed. You helped us to do that. In our shelter, we locked down the shelter when COVID hit to keep the residents who were there safe. But in order to respond to those who still needed housing, we had as many as 30 families in local motels at one time. And with your help, not only were we able to house them, we were able to feed them two meals a day. Our long-term housing, where we have at least 20 veterans here in Cobb County who live with us, they would be homeless were it not for this program. You helped us to care for them and house them and feed them during this time. So I ask you to consider the new funding before you. With your help, you know, in a couple of weeks, we're going to gather around the table with our families. Might be a smaller gathering this year, but we're still going to gather. And we're going to celebrate Thanksgiving and give thanks for all the things that we have to be thankful for. And we're going to have the turkey or the ham and we're going to have all the trimmings at our table. It's going to be a good time. It'll be good to be together. This is what this new funding will allow us to do in Cobb County so that other citizens, fellow neighbors of ours, can have the same experience that we're going to have. In Smyrna alone, you're going to help us serve a complete Thanksgiving meal to over 800 families. In Marietta, you're going to help us serve that same meal to over 350 families. On Thanksgiving Day, you're going to allow us to feed 250 people at our shelter throughout the day. Through our senior services, we'll serve over 100 of our fellow citizens. Through our permanent housing, our long-term housing, we'll serve over 70 people with a full Thanksgiving meal. And through our families who come to us through the schools, we'll serve over 1,500 families with a complete Thanksgiving meal. And that's because of your willingness to be committed to this county. For that, I thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Davida Carter?
Commissioners Mike Boyce, Kelly Gamble, Bob Ott, Joanne Burrell, and Lisa Cupid, I want to thank you for this time that y'all allowed me to speak this morning. My name is Davida Carter and I'm a resident of South Cobb. I, um, am a taxpayer and a constituent. I'm also an American Indian, Cherokee by blood. I am here this morning to discuss with you, um, the COVID-19 pandemic and the eviction that, uh, the moratorium on evictions that's running out on December 31st. First, I want to thank you because there are some programs that you guys have out there and my husband's job was in Cobb County. He worked at HD Supply, which has been shut down since 3/15/2020. This time has been difficult for us as a family, but I want to thank you all because we were able to get some funding from Starzy that did help us to pay some of our rents. So I want to thank you guys for that. His job has not, um, even said that when they're going to be, um, able to open again. It probably won't be till the new year. Uh, I'm sorry. And you know, the unemployment that they get is a little help, but it's nothing compared to what he used to make, um, as a chef inside of that HD Supply. The state of Georgia received 4.1 billion and Cobb County received over $8 million of the CARES Act to help us to, um, with families that's been affected by the pandemic. Without this help, I'm sure that I would be homeless right now. So as I said, I want to thank you. We all want things to be back to normal where citizens can go back to work, but until then, we are asking our public officials to help the families in our county. We, the people, we need help. We need money for, um, for the unemployment. We also need affordable housing. I contacted Congress and also Senate when it first hit about this pandemic. And I was, you know, sent to the office, got me back, called me back. And, um, we actually do still need that other stimulus. We are suffering. These people are going to be evicted come after January 1st. They have children. A lot of them aren't back in school yet. So they are, they're going to lose their home and their school. And we pay fair market price for these apartments. In Cobb County, there is no really affordable housing. And in the city of Marietta, Marietta, the Housing Authority, they get all the funds allocated from HUD for low-income housing. Austell, Mableton, and all the other cities, we don't benefit from that at all. We, the people, need affordable housing, especially during this pandemic. To evict families during this pandemic is a human rights violation. Since the United States is responsible for enforcing and implementing human rights treaties, see Executive Order 13107 and 13818, aren't the courts not expected to uphold the human rights, um, cases? Also, the national moratorium that ends December 31st, um, the Georgia Constitution preamble states, "To perpetuate the principle of free government, ensure justice for all, preserve peace, promote the interests and happiness of the citizen and of the family, and transmit to posterity the enjoyment of liberty, the..." We, the people of Georgia, relying upon the protection and guidance of Almighty God, Almighty God do ordain and has established this constitution. The preamble of the great state of Georgia says it all. The Bill of Rights, Section 1, Rights of Person State, Person State, Liberty, Life, Liberty, and Property. No person shall be deprived of life, liberty, or property except due process of law. Section 6 of the Bill of Rights states, "Citizens, protection of all citizens of the United States, residents in this state, are hereby declared citizens of this state, and it shall be the duty of the General Assembly to enact such laws as will protect them in the full enjoyment of immunities due to such citizens."
Ms. Carter, Ms. Carter, your time is up.
Thank you all. And I just wanted to read our constitution because it, it matters. Thank you all. Have a wonderful day.
Monica Delancey?
Monica Delancey, Riverside Community. We Thrive and Riverside Renters Association. I'm here to speak about the Eviction Prevention Committee that we formed in response to the pandemic that's taking place. Last month, I spoke to you about a young lady that brought here today, but she didn't want to speak, but she asked me to speak for her. And she is the young lady that we have, we had to file an appeal in order to stop her eviction because the landlord terminated her lease just because he wanted to, um, use the 30-day notification clause in the lease. Even though it is a pandemic, he wanted to use that clause. This tenant had not been late. Even the judge asked the landlord, was she a habitual violator or involved in any type of criminal activity? And the landlord said, no. He just wanted to use his clause, which is give 30-day notice. Fortunately, when she came to, um, us and, and asked us to help her with this, we were able to not only attend court with her, listen, and then after court, we filed the, um, the appeal. So she is still in her home and she's waiting for her case to be heard in state court. But since then, some other people have called and told me and informed me that they received notices that their leases are going to be terminated and are not renewed. Um, a couple of people in another apartment complex said their lease is not being renewed. And then another family said it was terminated. They're giving them, um, um, notices and their move-out date is December. Again, um, just kind of confused why that these landlords are able to, to do this, especially during a pandemic. And these are women, women with children, that have to not only try to find a place to live, um, because some of them are on housing, but housing does not provide deposits, housing does not provide application fees. Only, only thing housing provide is your rent. So when they go to try to find another place to move to, they have to pay a security deposit, which may can be $1,000. In addition, they have to, um, pay for, um, application fees, administration fees. Now you're looking at almost $2,000. Then on top of that, they have to find a, to move. So a family could be subjected to spending an excess of $3,000 to $4,000 or $5,000 to move based on the fact of no, nothing, no violation on their part. Um, then I do want to talk a little bit about, um, some of your rental assistance. Again, thank you for providing that, but there are some issues with a couple of, um, agencies. One agency denied a lady, she makes $11 an hour. She was denied because one check stub showed that she made overtime. But throughout the year, she only makes $11 an hour. So just because that one check stub showed that she made a little overtime, she's not been denied. Um, basically, a person that makes $11 an hour, they're bringing home less than $2,000 a month and she stays her rent is $1,100 a month. So just because she received a little overtime, it just maybe helped out during those months where she did not get overtime or where she's not able to be afforded opportunity to go find another job to help out with her expenses. So I told her to write that in her hardship letter and maybe it could be reevaluated. All right? And I do want to take this time to also recognize that, thank you for recognizing the veterans and, um, thank you for their service. But November is National Parent Appreciation Month. And we want to recognize all the parents who have not only been, um, take, being able to teach their children at home and because our homes been, has become our schools, but also parents who are, um, participating in the community and making sure that they keep a stable home for their families. And I do have some gifts for you as well I want to give to you. Um, in here is your, um, Parent Appreciation Survival Kit. You have, um, Starburst because you're a star. You have chocolate to remind you that you're sweet. Lifesavers, could you save lives? You have a pencil with the eraser because you do make mistakes. And you also have an apple. An apple a day keeps the COVID doctor away. Okay? So thank you again. May I go?
Thank you, Monica. It's always a pleasure to have you. Just go and give them to Brad there and he'll pass them. Yeah, there you go. You're welcome there, you know that.
Karen Shirley?
Good morning, Cobb County Commissioners Board Panel. A pleasure to speak with you today in reference to just a few things that I have been acknowledged and had the opportunity recently to become a part of the newly-formed Cobb County Southside Eviction Prevention Board to help research and find resources and avenues to help families that are now in despair and in need of assistance in their communities. I just want to say that prior to the pandemic in March, our country, as we knew it once before, was thriving. People were working. Uh, people were working, schools were in session, we were able to go to our churches. And since then, things have, have changed. But because of that, it doesn't mean that we have to look at it in a negative way. My purpose today is just to bring attention as a community family if we can work together with businesses, um, as liaisons to come together to find out the needs of every community. Uh, South Cobb, uh, is different from, uh, North Cobb. And so that means they have different needs, they have different programs in place that can help aid them, uh, more readily than people on the South Side. So to bring each side together, what I would propose is if we can work together with, uh, representatives, um, from both sides to come together at the table to see how we can bring collaborative, our efforts, our resources together, what South Side is not getting, um, that maybe something different that's going on with the North Side. So we can work together as a strong community, not a divided community, when one side is getting more assistance or aids, uh, versus another side. I understand that you guys have, uh, given resources to, um, the Home Savers Program, which I think a lot of people have been able to submit applications but have not gotten response back in where they are standing far as the submission, uh, as far back as in September. So wanted to find out if someone could enlighten us or let us know exactly when a family, uh, would be able to hear something back from an advisor or representative because not really knowing the process, it's been, um, really long and hardship on families, uh, submitting the information, uh, application and information that's requested, but no one is getting back. And every time you call, it's, well, somebody will get back with you and nobody's heard, uh, anything back with them. So we know that you guys are responsible for that, uh, that great program, putting resources in place so individuals can take advantage of getting these resources. I know our communities are in dire straits right now, far straits right now because we've been hit by the pandemic. I don't think the community as a whole is looking for a handout, but a hand up to stay stable in the community. And as we know, people make the community. Without people in the community, our businesses will shut down. And so we need to make sure that our residents, our communities, our activists are diligently doing what they need to do to help, um, spearhead, uh, committees, to talk to business owners, to see what they can do, come up with a pool of resources for those families that are in their communities, that shop at their stores, that purchase their goods and services. Because without these individuals, you'll soon see more businesses declining, you'll see more businesses closing their doors, going out of business. And then we'll have a, a, a community that has pretty much have just died. So this is what we don't want. We want to keep the communities vibrant and healthy and strong and flourishing and growing. And we want to see our people back out there again. But in order to do that, we need resources in our communities. We need programs that will help aid our families to stay afloat, uh, stay on top so they can continue to, um, pursue their goals and dreams and aspirations and put back into the community. So that's my thing is if we can get together on both sides of the table, come together, formulate, create, um, specialized programs, get together with the businesses in the communities and see how we can bring and pull funds together for those families that are in need. Again, thank you for the opportunity to speak with you. We thank you for being on the first, on the front line, um, taking the hits, um, from other constituents and just with the pandemic, all that it brings, the stress, uh, the anxiety. But we are encouraging our faith to not be anxious about anything, but to pray about everything. So I ask that you move forward, that you guys continue to pray and, uh, our communities will come back together. Thank you.
And if you'd do me a favor, if you'd leave your contact information with our assistant, Millie Rogers there, we'll get back to about the Home Saver contact information, right?
Oh, thank you, sir.
My pleasure.
Our last speaker is Joyette Holmes.
Good morning. I am Joyette Holmes, a resident of District 1 and Cobb's District Attorney. I am up here to say thank you. As a servant and citizen of this county, I just say thank you to Cobb County Government. While my W2s may have shown the Cobb Solicitor's Office or Cobb DA's Office or the Cobb Magistrate Court, I have truly felt like I was a part of every team that's represented in Cobb County Government. To the Commissioners, Mr. Chair, the Commissioners' teams, County Manager, Communications, the County Attorney's Office, the IS Department, EMA, Public Safety, Department of Public Health, the Clerk's Office, every agency, Support Services, Property Management, every agency in this county works hard to serve together. There is absolutely nothing that I could have done, that our teams could have done in those agencies that I talked about without each and every one of you. And so I just stand here because I think publicly, people need to know the effort that it takes to continue to make this county great. I congratulate each and every person who ventured to run for election, congratulate those who won their elections because this county needs people to serve and to serve The partnerships that you saw with community organizations that were recognized here today. We, none of us do it alone. And so in the time that I've been able to serve professionally in this community, I just say thank you for listening, for answering that phone, no matter what we were asking for. Finance, who continue to answer and, um, educate. Dana, I know you're not with Cobb County anymore, but some of the things we were able to do in magistrate court, we couldn't have but for the partnership that you were willing to have with us in that magistrate court. So there is probably somebody sitting at each and every seat in this room that I could say thank you to because there is something that you have contributed to what we do here and what we have done in those other departments. So personally, even if not professionally, I will continue to serve this community because I love this community. And so I just say thank you.
And I can assure you, District Attorney Holmes, that our feelings are reciprocated by all you've done over at your office, uh, to, uh, make sure that people are treated with fairness and balance in your system. So thank you so much. All right, uh, we need to add something to the regular agenda items. I move to add a non-agenda item and to create under a regular agenda for Community Development tab, item number 34, which, which is to approve the Economic Incentive Commitment Agreement with Project Elan. So we have a second, uh, in discussion. All in favor, uh, call a question. All in favor, please raise your hand if you support it. Passes five to zero. All right, thank you. And now we're scrolled the consent agenda before I call that, move to call that question. Okay, with that, I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as revised. Second, any discussion? Uh, hearing none, discussion. I'll call a question. All in favor, please raise your hand. Passes five to zero. Okay, on to regular. First one is transportation with a record-setting only two agenda items.
Yes, sir. Good morning, Chairman, Commissioners. We have two agenda items for consideration. And the first one is requesting that the Board of Commissioners approve a utility relocation agreement with the Georgia Power Company in an amount not to exceed $21,616 for preliminary engineering and relocation of facilities on Willio Road over Willio Creek.
Rasharott, so moved. We have a second discussion. Hearing none, call a question. All in favor, please raise your hand. Passes five to zero.
Thank you. Our second item is requesting that the Board of Commissioners approve a contract with Glosson Enterprises LLC in an amount not to exceed $690,809.73 for intersection improvements on Old Canton Road at Holly Springs Road.
Commissioner Burl.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, call a question. All in favor, please raise your hand. Passes five to zero. Thank you. Uh, next is Information Services.
Good morning, Chairman, Commissioners and County Manager. Our item this morning is to request the Board of Commissioners approve a general fund, fund balance appropriation in the amount of $508,000 to supplement funding for the renovation costs for the data center building technology modernization project, 2016 SPOS Project X0010, and authorize the corresponding budget transactions.
Commissioner Ott, summoned. The second discussion. Hearing none, I'll call a question. All in favor, please raise your hand. Passes five to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Public safety.
Good morning, Chairman, Commissioners. Public safety has one item and it's to ask the Board to approve the purchase of public safety vehicles as part of the 2016 SPOS Tier 1 program in the amount of $288,339. Authorize an inter-fund transfer from the Fire Fund in the amount of $3,913.76. Authorize the corresponding budget transactions and further authorize the Chairman to execute the necessary documents.
Okay, Commissioner Burl.
Yes, motion to approve.
We have a second discussion. Hearing none, I'll call a question. All in favor, please raise your hand. Passes five to zero.
Thank you.
Thank, thank you, Director. Uh, next is finance.
Morning, Chairman, Commissioners, County Manager. Finance has one item today and it requests the Board of Commissioners approve additional emergency funding in the amount of $600,000 to be administered by WFN Consulting for the purchase of food and for the funding of direct expenses related to food procurement, storage and distribution and professional service fees at $40,000. Authorize the fund balance appropriation in the amount of $600,000. Authorize the corresponding budget transactions and further authorize the Chairman to execute the Second Amendment and any other necessary documents.
So moved. Discussion. Hearing none, I'll call a question. All in favor, please raise your hand. Passes five to zero. Thank you, Mr. Volkman.
Thank you.
Uh, Community Development.
Good morning. Project Elan has submitted an economic incentive application and other supporting documentation, seeking incentives available through the county's economic incentives ordinance. Staff has reviewed this application that has, and their supporting documentation have determined, uh, that they meet the requirements of the county's special economic impact incentive program per the following. The project will create an estimated 162 jobs, which exceeds the minimum of 150, and the project's economic impact pays an average salary of 1.25 times the county wage average for that industry as determined by the Georgia Department of Labor and the economic, or excuse me, in the Employment and Wages Annual Report. A written conditional offer of incentives was provided to Project Elan and working with the County Attorney's Office, staff has developed a draft economic incentive commitment agreement to formally memorialize the terms of this incentive offer. So with that, we ask that the Board of Commissioners approve an economic incentive commitment agreement and a substantially similar form for Project Elan authorize the Chairman to execute the necessary documents.
Rasharott.
All right, I make a motion to approve the, um, economic incentive commitment agreement with, uh, Project Elan.
A second. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, this is just a technicality, but number 34 was also on our consent agenda for approval.
Yeah, it should have been.
When, when it scrolled through.
I saw that, but we revised it and took it off with this agenda item.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure.
Right. So I, I saw that also. I think that's why they quickly took it off. They didn't take it off. But we're not approving on the consent, we're approving on this regular item right here. So, okay.
But we did a motion that added it to a regular community development tab right before we did the consent.
We added, that was my motion to add it to regular. Yes, right. Okay, so it's good to know we're all awake here, watching us to make sure we're doing the right thing. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call a question. All in favor, please raise your hand. Passes five to zero. Thank you. Okay, any further public comment? I've seen, hearing none. I'll start with, um... Rasharott.
What is it like the lottery over there? Well, mine, I just have two, uh, comments for two announcements. Um, the first is to congratulate Jerica Richardson, I don't, I don't believe she could make it today, on her successful election to be the next District 2 Commissioner. So just want to offer my congratulations to her. And the second one is to remind everyone, and we've heard it a couple of times already today, that tomorrow is Veterans Day. Um, make sure that you, uh, make an attempt to, uh, thank all the veterans and the current service members for their service. And as you heard, especially those from the Vietnam War who did not get the welcome home that they deserved. That's all.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Kupin.
Thank you. We continue to say thank you and honor Veterans Day to everyone who served. Thank you for your service and particularly those who are here with the county. In our consent agenda, today we passed an item to have the Hawks provide an in-kind donation to build a basketball court at our Ron Anderson Community Center and to also renovate one of their community rooms. This item has been in the works for about three years now, and I'm so excited to see this to pass. Um, the initial expenditure was anticipated to be about $40,000 and, um, they had some changes in the program and now the donation that they're making is going to be to the tune of about $160,000. So I... So I really appreciate them taking the time to consider our community here in the Powder Springs area, and just know this adds to a menu of recreational amenities that is in that Wild Horse Creek area, and know we will continue to have a draw throughout the county with this asset being there. And finally, just want to say thank you, thank you to voters, and thank you to District Four for your support in this past election. It has been a very tough time. I really want to thank my assistant because I have been just scattered in so many different ways in trying to balance serving the district and running for office, and for you to have stepped up the way you have, I just want to thank you publicly as well for your serving District Four residents as avidly as you have. I look forward to continuing to serve Cobb County and look forward to serving with all of you who are here, serving and staff at the county. Thank you, and again, I'm humbled by the support, and just really excited about District Four for just how you stepped up. Traditionally, District Four is, is not as well represented when it comes to the vote tally, and when I saw District Four residents get out there, I just know that our, our part of the county is a force to be reckoned with when it comes to having an impact in what happens for the entire county. So District Four, you know, sometimes referred to yourself as that redheaded stepchild, or but no, you stepped forward today and, or that day, and hope that you continue to do so, and know that you have as much of a place at the table as any other district here in the county. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Burrow.
Thank you. Tomorrow is Veterans Day, and like everyone has said, please remember. Our veterans, and thank them for their service. They put their lives on the line every day to protect our freedoms, and we owe them a debt of gratitude that we could never repay. So thank you to all those who have served and are currently serving. Next line. Congratulations, Erica. Our own DOT Director, Erica Parrish, this past Friday was named the WTS Atlanta Chapters' Woman of the Year at Friday Scholarship Luncheon. It's because of leaders in our county like Erica that put Cobb County on the map, and she has done an excellent job, and we commend her for this award. Also, a big congratulations to all the winners in last Tuesday's election. Thank you to all the winners and all those that put themselves out there to run for public office. It's not an easy task, and I'd also like to say thank you to all the poll workers, volunteers, our Elections Director, Janine Evler, and staff, and we appreciate all you do, and congratulations. We are very excited about the Cobb Veterans Memorial Foundation, and with Veterans Day tomorrow, we ask that you just visit the website, cobbveteransmemorial.com for more information, and also to see how you can volunteer to, to help or fundraise or whatever you'd like to do to support this. The 2022 SPOS passed last Tuesday also, so there is a million dollars on that SPOS to go towards the building of this beautiful memorial and as a District Three Community Impact project. So please get out there and support our Veterans Memorial Foundation. And speaking of our veterans, the Superior Pet for Patriotic Vets Program has two new adoptions. Mr. Savage, who we don't, we did not want to picture, adopted Pit Bull, and we thank him for his 22 years of service in the U.S. Air Force. And Mr. Fretman adopted this cute kitten, and we thank him for serving three years in the U.S. Army. So other events and projects going on in the district can be found on the, on my newsletter, Thank you, and happy Veterans Day tomorrow, and happy birthday to the Marines today.
Thank you, Commissioner Burrow. Commissioner Ambrell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You can order your holiday flowers to support our extension and 4-H programs. This is the second annual holiday plant sale of poinsettias by the University of Georgia Extension Service of Cobb County. This is a fundraiser that will help support their activities. Orders must be received by November 13th, and for more information, you can call 770-528-4070. And a big congratulations to Jimmy Geese. He has been named our new Deputy County Manager. While Jimmy will be leaving the Parks Department, we know he has done a great job training up his staff, and I know the Parks Department will continue to provide all the wonderful programs they have for the county while he steps into his new role here. So congratulations, Jimmy.
That probably warrants Mr. Geese coming up front for a second, don't you think?
I can take a pause, Chairman.
I think so, yes. Mr. Geese. Yes.
You have five minutes. You're not running this time. You're not running this time. Thank you, Commissioners, Mr. Chairman, Mr. M-Manager. I'm extremely honored. In my years in the private sector, I got to travel the state, see governments of all shapes and sizes of cities and counties, and there is none better. There is no comparison to the services, to the support, to the, just the overwatch that this county gives to its residents, and to now to be able to join Dr. McMorris on, on the management team and with a great group of department heads and agency heads and elected officials countywide. I'm extremely honored to, to have this position and looking forward to great things in the, in the future. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Geese.
And again, remembering all who served. Veterans Day honors all members of the Armed Forces who served this country valiantly to protect and to keep us safe. We thank all of our veterans for their patriotism and willingness to serve and sacrifice for the greater good. All Cobb County government offices, including libraries and courts, will be closed tomorrow, Wednesday, November 11th, in observance of Veterans Day. And then the City of Acworth will be hosting their next Community Conversations series, the Minority Women in Veterans Own Seminar, on Thursday, November 12th, from 8:00 to 10:00 a.m. at the Acworth Community Center. Attendance can either be in person or virtual online. You can email communityconversations@acworth.org to get that link. Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, first of all, I want to congratulate Chairman-elect Lisa Cupid on assuming the reins of the county on January 1st. I also want to talk about, just very briefly, the extraordinary efforts on the part of so many people in this county to speak, to get out there and represent the voice of the people. We had over 300,000, 500,000 elected, 300, 500,000 voters in the county who went to the polls in October, November, and I think that's just a great example of true democracy in action. But I think it's also important that as part of this process, that we have a transition in grace, that we acknowledge the voice of the people, we hear them, and we move on. I think Commissioner Cupid knows that I stand ready and able to assist her in this transition in every aspect of this important role that she's about to assume. That's because it's for the best interest of the people of Cobb County that we have this transition in grace, and I hope that this message gets loud and clear to our national and our state leaders, that this transition in grace is part of the election process. I find it extraordinary that four years ago, nobody complained about the results of the election, and yet four years later, we have people who question the integrity of the voting process because they lost. That doesn't reflect well of leadership. That doesn't happen in Cobb County. That's not going to happen in Cobb County as long as I'm the chairman. And I think it's important that we are different here in Cobb County because the people themselves are such decent, wonderful, and caring people, and they expect that of us as leaderships, that we do all we can to make this transition in grace so that when she assumes the leadership on January 1st, it will be without any kind of interruption. So tomorrow, we celebrate Veterans Day, and as you know, I'm a veteran, as is Commissioner Rott, but really, we're all veterans in this country. Because if we were ever called by this country, we would step up and do our duty because we love this country. And tomorrow, I just think it's a great time to remember, if nothing else, what this country stands for, that although veterans fought for freedom and still fight for freedom, we all fight for freedom our own ways, and the way to do that is acknowledge the world and voice of the people, and to continue and to encourage what I call this transition in grace. So with that, we adjourn.